Yes, we're going to be.
Yeah, I'm in it.
We got to stay in every moment.
Mr. Joanne's out there finding more chairs.
Starting to heck you.
Do you have a Thomas? I know. Do you have any chairs we have?
Right at that.
Go ahead and call the regular meeting. Tuesday, August 5th to order. Don't mind, we'll all stand and Dr. Barnett will give the invocation and Alderman Wade will reply.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight and take care of city business. I pray your blessing upon our mayor and Board of Aldermen and their families in our city. Lord, we want to be the best we can be, so give us wisdom. May we all acknowledge that we need your help in every area of our lives, and I pray we had to submit to that wisdom. Thank you, Lord, if we live in a country where we can have a say, and we are grateful, in Jesus' name, amen.
United States, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Speaker, can y'all hear me back there? Yep, can you hear me in the back? No, you still can't? Now can you, Bob? Can you hear me? Nope? Okay, let the record show all Aldermen are present this evening, and is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some do.
Got a motion by Alderman Wade.
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Pfeiffer. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have a presentation for our insurance renewal by Mr. John Locker. John here? There we go.
For those that don't know me, I'm John Locker, and I'm with Ninety Degree Benefits. We've done the benefits here for the city for, I think, just over ten years. Our office is located in Pasqualeville, Mississippi, so we've, like I said, been here for ten years. Last year, I said this was probably the easiest renewal I've done, and I think this year's going to be even easier than what last year was, so. I'll go through the presentation pretty quickly, but if you have questions, please stop and ask. We handle two parts of your employee benefits. Now, there's another agency that handles dental, vision, and life and that type of stuff. The two parts that we handle is your medical insurance, and then what we have, what we call a self-funded gap plan or split-funded plan, which I'll explain that in just a minute. But we'll go through those real quick. If you look under the medical rental, the little square box, I know that's small, spring and stuff, I brought my glasses. That just gives you a quick list of the benefits going down there. You see the office code page, the thirty dollars. You see the hospital code page, your urgent care and ER code page, your x-ray and lab code page. Then it says your deductible five thousand dollars per employee. I'll explain that in just a second. You don't have a five thousand. You do with United, but I'll tell you what we did with the split-funded gap plan, and I'll talk about in just a second. If you go down toward the bottom of the box, you'll see your current rates for employee, employee spouse, employee children, and family. Those rates, they tried to go up five percent. We got them to come back down to zero percent, so you got a flat renewal. Now, if you remember, last year, you also got a flat renewal last year, but last year they gave you what they call a premium holiday. They gave you roughly a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars back last year because your loss ratio was good last year, so they gave you a hundred and eighteen thousand. The reason they came up with a hundred and eighteen thousand is that's one month of premium. So when you renew in October, the next month, they basically give you the month of November at no cost to the city. So that's a tremendous, it's a hundred and eighteen thousand last year. This year, they're going to come back and give you a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the month of November, so you got to have another premium holiday for November, again, equalling a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So that's great news. You got a flat renewal, which is hard to get these days, and you're getting a hundred and twenty-two thousand back for November. You can't ask for better than that. The next page, it just kind of shows you that, if you look at the blue highlighted area toward the bottom of the page, that shows you that I'm going to get back a hundred and twenty-two thousand, which is a reduction of your annual premium by eight point three fifty percent. So that's, again, that's roughly one month premium for the month of November. The next page is where we're going to get into, we do a self-funded, some people call it a gap policy, we call it a split-claimed policy. We implemented this ten years ago here at the city because we have about sixty or seventy of these split-funded policies. Every single week, we put these in on the quarter safe money. What this policy does is, rather than you going to United Healthcare or Blue Cross or anybody, rather than buying a thousand dollar deductible for the employees, what you do is you buy a five thousand dollar deductible for the employees, and you self-insure between one thousand and five thousand, so you're self-insuring four thousand dollars. So you have done that for the past ten years, every single year you have saved money. This page here is what we call a profit-loss. This shows you by month, October, twenty-four, the start of it, you're roughly putting in about ten thousand a month into this account. That's equivalent to about seventy dollars per employee per month. The saying is that you're getting exactly more than seventy a month, but with working with Mandy and Patty in the years past, we just came up with a number of these seventy dollars, and you're still not even spending that. You can see the profit. First column is how much you put in it every month. The second column is our fixed cost, that's normally our admin fee. We don't charge you an admin fee. We normally charge ten to fifteen dollars per employee per month, but because we give the medical for you, we're not charging you any premium, any admin fee for the split-funded plan. The third column is your medical claims. These are the claims that we pay between one thousand and five thousand, so this is your self-insured part for four thousand. The last column is your profit-loss for the month. You can see in October, you had a negative number. All the other months, you've had positive numbers. Beginning of the year, you have about four hundred and forty-two thousand profit. You've added about another sixty thousand profit this year, so now you're up to about five hundred and two thousand profit over the last ten years. Now, you don't have this amount of money in an account here at the city. You've got a lot of money, but it's a little bit lower than the five hundred because the city uses that money for other benefits for the city. They use it for health fairs, they use it for, I think, gym memberships, the other things cities uses that for to benefit the employee, but you do have this substantial amount of money in this account that we've done. Again, this has worked very, very well for the city over ten years, because it was five hundred thousand dollars. Between a premium holiday, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and you've got another sixty thousand, you add to this about five hundred thousand total, that's unbelievable. We're to keep our fingers crossed we can keep going like this. I'll go ahead and say the last part, Becky can talk about the next three pages. We also looked at self-funded, we also looked at Blue Cross, but if you made any change, you're going to lose a hundred and twenty-two thousand, so it's not even an option to even look at anything else because you're giving back a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So there are some self-funded quotes on the back from four or five different companies. I was like, you're going to go over them, because it doesn't make sense. But I'll let Becky go through the next few pages on some other things that the employees get through United Healthcare.
Yeah, so, United Healthcare brought to the table a year or so ago, a care cash card that gets preloaded with two hundred dollars for a significant amount of dollars that they can use for specialty care, doctor visits, I think. It does have to be applied for, so it's not an automatic card that the employee gets. They have to go in and request that card, but they do, and they get that preloaded. That's free money to the employee to use for those medical expenses. They also provided visits twenty-four seven, telemedicine, virtual visits through United Healthcare, so they're costing the employee to use that service, no copay, and if they call in, any kind of medication, the employee's out the cost of the medication. But again, that twenty-four seven is at no cost to the employee. Also, they've given, there's a list of prescription drugs the employee can get for certain types of illnesses, that's a zero dollar copay, like your allergy drugs, your asthmas, some of those types of drugs. And then lastly, they brought to the table a wellness program. The employees can sign up for wellness rewards. Through that wellness rewards, they can earn up to three hundred dollars annually to spend however they'd like to. They get that back in the form of a virtual debit card or, sorry, usually in the form of a virtual debit card, or depends on their Apple Wallet, and they can spend it however they like. They're not limited to what they can spend that. So that's all part of the United Healthcare program that the employees can get.
We will begin up and rolling.
End of office.
End of office. Yep, so, we're open to any questions y'all may have, but it's a super nice renewal, easy renewal we're coming to.
Yeah, and this is very good news, and I tell you, you know, one day, we might be able to be self-insured, you never know. Ten years ago, we had that discussion, and you came up with the split-funding, and it has just, it's been a great savings for the city, and I think it's working. I mean, I haven't looked at those options you have on the back few pages, but thank you for putting them on there for our review. Thank y'all for coming.
Our goal is to one day try to get you to self-fund it, but when you're getting a hundred and twenty-two thousand back, you just.
You're right.
Don't want to lose that money, when it's free money.
Thank you.
And then here, my ninety thousand, and just this ten months for this year on the split-funding, self-funded gap.
Anybody have any questions? Well, thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Martha, does anybody, do we need a motion to accept that renewal?
I'll make a motion. Do we accept the renewal as recommended by Ninety Degree Benefits for October 1st?
Second. Motion and a second by Alderman Tillis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank y'all, John. All right, so we got a public hearing for Lima Properties LLC on Martin Luther King Drive, PIDN number six zero one one nine three three four, three three two, three three zero, three four zero, three two eight, and three two eight point zero five. Requesting ex zoning change from residential, RD, two-family residential to CMX one neighborhood commercial mixed-use. PC recommends denial. Is there a motion to go into public?
Some move.
Motion and a second by Alderman Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing. Wait, there you go. You want to explain them?
Yeah, sure thing. Thank you. Sarah, could you scroll down to the map that shows the vicinity and hit the area if I can. Hit that second. I think it should be like the first page. Yeah, scroll down below that, please. There you go. Yes, Sarah. Okay, that shows you the property, where the property is located. It's the highlighted parcels there on the east side of Martin Luther King Drive, between Government Street and the railroad tracks. As you mentioned, it is six separate parcels. Three of them have full frontage on Martin Luther King Drive. One is landlocked, as you can see in the rear, and one is consists of a flaglock with a flag giving it access to MLK. Just give you a brief history of where this has been, since it's gone back and forth between the Planning Commission and the Board a couple of times. It was first considered by the Planning Commission at its main meeting, then it was then considered by the Board of Aldermen at its June 17th meeting. At that time, it was referred back to the Planning Commission because the applicant had some additional information, and that regarding the criteria for rezoning that Donovan Scruggs put together on their behalf, the Planning Commission did not have that considered at the time, so it was referred back to them. The Planning Commission, at its July 8th meeting, heard that new report, and at that time, they heard from the neighbors, also had a bit of discussion among themselves, and at that time, they did recommend denial of zoning change. They concluded that the changes that had occurred, that are described in the report, were primarily limited to Government Street, so that they did not feel that the changes were sufficient on Martin Luther King Drive toward the change in zoning. Just give you a little bit of history of the, of the characteristics of the zoning that's proposed and existing. You said it is in the RD, that's a two-family residential zoning district that allows duplexes. The proposal is to the CMX one zoning district, which is the least intense commercial district. It's a mixed-use district, does allow residential and retail uses both, has a maximum two-story height, and it's, would you mind saying, most of the perspective, Porter Avenue, most of it is in the CMX one district, so it gives you kind of perspective of what the character might be under that zoning. It's intended for smaller-scale commercial uses and a variety of residential uses. Residential uses are allowed by right. They include detached, detached dwellings, and live-work units, about in the neighborhood. Also, the standard board for the Planning Commission, which is on page eight of your packet there, does include the criteria contained in the Development Code for a zoning change, including consistency with the comprehensive plan, also, under Mississippi law requirements, about the, either a error in the initial zoning, or a change in the character of the neighborhood. It's said that the Planning Commission discussed those characteristics among themselves during their hearing, and they, as I said, they concluded that the changes were limited to Government Street, not to the point where it would justify a zoning change of this property. I think that concludes the relevant information from the staff report. No, Donovan Scruggs is here to make a presentation regarding his report on this. And that concludes my head of side. Be glad to answer any questions if you have, or let Scruggs talk.
Do you have any questions for Wade? Thank you, Wade. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for or against? Mr. Donovan, you want to come on up and give your presentation?
Good evening. My name is Donovan Scruggs. I'm asking here on behalf of Lima Properties to discuss the rezoning application for this property. I don't want to jump too far ahead in my presentation, but I think Wade brought up a pretty good point, and he said that the Planning Commission, you know, voted this down because they said that we talked a lot about Government Street and not so much about MLK. That's a correct statement on Wade's part, but it's an incorrect assessment by the Planning Commission because we gave a pretty good rundown of the changes in the immediate area. First slide, please. Basically, this is the property. As you can see, it's six parcels. Wade says adjacent to the Brooms property, which is in the purple CMX two, so it's bounded on two sides by the Brooms property. It's also across the street from CH zoning, Highway Commercial, and it's also across the street from the MLK Park, and it's adjacent to the south of the Matadonny Baptist Church parking lot. So the property is bounded on basically all sides by non-residential uses. Next slide, please. When you look at the site specifically, you're going to see that it's not performing. The lot size is a little off from the RD standards, and the structures that are on the properties are also not performing. So nothing within this parcel actually fits the zoning, except for maybe one parcel. I think that's important. Also, I think it's important to say that the southern property actually operated as a barbershop for a number of years, which is a commercial use, and then the tri-ple- is a three uses, three residential uses, which is also a non-performing use, meaning what's there now on this property does not meet your code. Next slide, please. This is in the RD district, and as I stated, I've kind of gone through and identified what is non-performing. The N C means that the property is non-performing, and by the RD standards, the C's mean that if I actually rezoned the property to CMX one, these would all be conforming. So if it takes something that is non-performing and makes it conforming, that's typically a positive. Next slide, please. This is a slide that shows the change in neighborhood character over the past thirty years. It's been quite tremendous. Ocean Springs Lumber was not there, Fifty and Fifty was not there, the Lycan CA definitely expanded, the firm property jumped up out of nowhere, was obstructed in the nineties. Matadonny Church actually took some houses down and expanded on, I guess it's now Reverend Trotter Street. Of course, the property that used to be where the parking lot is, that house was demoed several years ago, and a parking lot was put there. So when you look in context of the surrounding area, you see a lot of changes that have occurred in the past thirty years. Next slide, please. Then you want to zoom in on what's actually happened here at the side. Brooms, I love Brooms, I go there every morning I need to, but the changes since current on that side have been pretty significant. It was just one time a family neighborhood grocery store. Everybody from their hood shop there, been there since sixties or fifties, it's been there forever. And over the past twelve years, it's actually expanded. You've got the crawfish house there now. What used to be a row of nothing but brick and parking along Government Street, you now have various uses. You've got a restaurant, you've got two restaurants, actually, if you call it a buffet restaurant, and then you've got the, some retail outlets there as well. So there's been, I call it an intensification of the property that has occurred since it was redeveloped in 2012. Of course, if you look around, there are three houses across the street in this property. Those are no longer there. That's on MLK Drive, three houses that were present, oh, no longer are there. So I want to make sure you understand that I'm not talking about Government Street, I'm talking about MLK Drive. Also, I want to, you know, reiterate that in, that four or five years ago, the parking lot was not there. That's a substantial change in the neighborhood character. It no longer is residential in nature, that was, you know, paved paradise and you put up a parking lot. I mean, that's what happened with this property. It is no longer a grassy area, but it's a paved parking. Next slide, please. Just to reiterate, this is, top left is an old, old photo of a Brooms Grocery, not much there. Now, you see on the right, you've got the crawfish house at night, you've got the 2012 renovations that are underway in the bottom left, and of course, the bottom right shows you how it is today, a number of, a number of commercial uses along this corridor. And keep in mind, Blue Dog Bistro opens there on the corner, and there are seating, and there are people waiting, and there are parking, all on MLK that was not there, you know, fifteen years ago. So to discount this property and say it's on Government Street is about like me saying, well, we can't talk about Matadonny Church because they're on Reverend Trotter Drive. They're not even on MLK. I mean, you can't just say that if you don't, if you bought MLK, that you're not on MLK. Next slide, please. The property that we have under, we purchased, was actually for sale for over two years. Now, my understanding from public hearings is that members of the church reached out to the owner and wanted to buy it at a discounted rate, or the appraised value or whatever may have been. It was on the market for two years, they felt it was, and they wanted to buy it at a rate that the seller did not want to let it go for. So the current owner of the property paid the asking price. Nobody redlined anybody, nobody anything, take it. They bought it for the asking price, which I think if I owned the property and somebody offered me a lot of money for it, I'd be happy to sell it. And by not allowing people to sell their property is really not very good, in my opinion. Next, MLK Parks across the street, that's another slide, this property showing the parking lot as well there at the bottom left. Next slide. Again, this is a zoom in, traffic backs out, backs up on this property. It does show that, you know, this is what is out the front yard, and we think that a commercial user wanted, you know, buys it with this traffic. The slides on the left show the renovation of the property, that's now the parking lot, where it was one time a, you know, a grassy area, and now it's a not a grassy area. Next slide, please. This is the house that is let go adjacent to Brooms. This shows you just how close it is. It's about five feet from the property, and that does not count, you know, any kind of AC units or whatever there may be in the middle. So, you know, that shows you how close we are to commercial. And also, the same commercial, Brooms, is located right behind it. This property is bounded, once again, on two sides by Brooms Property, which is CMX two. Bottom slide shows you the property across the street, which is on Highway Commercial, and again, another slide showing the MLK portion of Blue Dog. Next slide, please. This is the property showing you the house that was once a barbershop, and then also shows you the complex, which is allowed in CMX one, but is not allowed in the RD district. It does show you there has been a change in character, not only on the surrounding properties, but also on the subject properties. Next slide, please. This slide is pretty cool. It's like a nineteen seventies slide looking along Government Street in that direction. You can see the tremendous amount of housing that was available and present on Government Street, MLK, and even on Highway Ninety, that's no longer present. There has been a massive change in neighborhood character that's primarily caused by the removal of residential structures in this area. The slide on the right, nineteen ninety-two, shows you areas that houses were present in nineteen ninety-two, and now the white dots represent houses are no longer present. So to me, it's very explicitly clear that there has been a change in neighborhood character. We can act like we don't want it, we can act like it's all on Government Street, but it's present on MLK. Next slide, please. This is the house south. I think they got a code violation, rightly so, the property is in terrible condition, and it's being demolished, and I'm sure it will be in the near future. But this goes to show you that, you know, sometimes investing in property is not a bad thing, it actually can be a good thing, and if a new structure plus some of these three properties, I think the city would be better off for it. Next slide, please. I don't know what this shows you, other than, yeah, single bathroom detached, are permitted use, accessory cottages are allowed. It's possible that we could do twelve units on the side as currently configured, yeah, with the safe loft center present. So what we're asking for is not a effort to really increase density, it's just, what we're really hoping to do is get a favorable zoning change so that we can come back to you with a good plan, because any redevelopment or rezoning or resubdivision of the property will require a public hearing, so we have to go back to the Planning Commission and come before you, but we'd rather do it with a project that we like and that you like versus trying to work within the constraints of the property as it is right now. Next slide, please. Traffic counts, somebody said traffic's getting crazier. If you look at this, MLK actually decreases, Government Street has decreased over the years. Hopeland and Washington's increased. This shows you a little bit that, you know, folks are avoiding downtown because of the traffic, which I think is a good thing. I don't go down Government Street unless I have to, but, or if I want to just get away and travel this way down the street. I think it functions very well, and it pushes traffic where it does not, where it should be, which is on some of the outlined streets and corridors. Next slide, please. Conference plan, everybody likes the old comp plan. I like the old comp plan. The old comp plan actually shows this property as being commercial center low tier, which means what we're doing is consistent with the designation of the future land use map of the comp plan that y'all like, and the one that nobody likes, which is the one that is currently being considered. That shows, also shows this being a commercial low tier, you know. So both comp plans, one adopted and the one being considered, both show as it being compliant. Next slide, please. We get to the comp plan. We get to the comp plan and infill development, providing more houses, interconnected between adjacent land, land uses. All of these are buzzwords that are in your comp plan that we just constantly check the box on. This plan is very consistent with your comp plan, and I believe it's a step in the right direction. Next slide, please. This is more, you know, transition areas, that's what we are here with this particular rezoning, flexibility to housing types. Yeah, I believe there's a lot of things we can do with this property that's pretty cool. Upstairs, downstairs, mixed use, small lots, small business. The CMX1 is your most restricted zoning district, and it is made to actually work adjacent to single bedroom residential. It works a lot better than CH that's adjacent to the site. Next slide. More portions of the comp plan that shows you our consistency with this. Also says maximize sales, tactfully. I mean, vacant property or unutilized property that we have right now on the site is not, you know, filling the city's coffers, and it's really a delight to the neighborhood and to the area. We would like to work with the city and do a project that we'll be happy with, and I'll approve of. Next slide, please. Basis for rezoning, you know, there has been a tremendous change in neighborhood character. We think the CMX1 is most appropriate. CMX2 would be logical because it's adjacent to it, but we don't think that's appropriate for the neighborhood. We do think CMX1 is a very good fit. The bottom is, you know, change has occurred primarily on the Brooms site, which is adjacent to the site on two sides. The property to the north is the church parking lot. That's a change on MLK that's pretty evident. And the CH across the street, which includes the houses that were removed, are also changing. So the changes that we're talking about are directly on MLK, and I can talk about all kinds of changes on Government Street if I want to, but I want to focus on MLK because that's what we've talked about. So if I want to talk about changes on MLK, and y'all say, and y'all, the planning commission says that, you know, Brooms isn't in the neighborhood, or, you know, that I'm not talking about the neighborhood because it's on government, the same consideration ought to be handed for anybody who is not on MLK. I mean, if somebody says, I'm on Meemville Boulevard, or I'm, you know, down here on Washington Avenue, that's not the neighborhood. The neighborhood, if the, if the planning commission is going to decide and define the neighborhood as only property owners or people on MLK, then y'all should adhere to that criteria, which I don't believe in, but it is a criteria that the planning commission used to deny this. I think Mr. Gibson, but he's the only landowner who actually spoke at the meeting, who is actually, has property on MLK. Everybody else, you know, lived in War V or War IV, War III, and there were a few in War II, but it was, it was not a lot of property owners on MLK. So that may change a lot, but I do know at the planning commission meeting, we took notes, and there were not a lot of people who lived in the neighborhood as defined by[800.88]
That that was a significant problem in consideration of the traffic increase on MLK. So, his report, a report paid for by the city, twenty-two and twenty-three. Also, you know, he talked about the church parking lot in the church. Church was rebuilt, that was in nineteen ninety-seven. Parking lot, uh, was built, I think, four or five years ago. Wasn't anything on the land. Uh, houses was already gone. And the big difference for both of them, they're allowed an RD two. Then the big difference with the parking lot, the church didn't actually change it only. You gave us conditional use. Big difference. Uh, then he talked about pricing. Uh, like we talked about in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, um, we all are grateful to live in a free country. I served this country for thirty years before I retired here. I retired here because I liked the small town feel of Ocean Springs, Mississippi. And so, when it goes to, you know, the pricing of the land, yes, the church, uh, the owner goes to our church. So, yes, he offered it to us for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we said right now, we didn't want to back that out. But again, the information didn't fit the narrative. The property really listed at eight hundred and fifty thousand. He offered it to the church at seven fifty, sold it for six fifty. That's new to hear there. But if we're gonna put facts, let's put facts. Uh, and then like I said, the other thing, just, you know, you say further, he still haven't shown me the public views, but then you still want to sit there and say you got tables and, uh, chairs on the corner. That's still does not represent that, you know, MLK. Just tables and chairs. Uh, so I just would like for you to consider all that and just, uh, I, I think, like I said, no one is against putting houses there. Cause I would tell you, you know, the houses do need to be replaced. But I would also ask them this question. Ever since they bought the land, have you looked at what the property look like now? It's gotten worse. Don't even cut the grass. So, is that the kind of neighborhood we're gonna be expected with, with this project? Thank you for, uh, your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, James Lewis Ward Five, as I was standing there, I was praying hard to God, give me the wisdom and the knowledge to say the correct things to you this evening. Number one is, is that, uh, we moved here in nineteen fifty-seven. Near that, uh, A O nine Persian Avenue. I know this area quite well. The MLK park, which at the time was called Playground because the Keyes family donated that park for the African-American children could have a place to play. We were boxed in as to where we could live. And that's the bottom line, whichever way you wanna slice it. Number one is, is that this gentleman stood up here, this is going back twice to the planning commission, and the planning commission did their due diligence after they got the information that said that they, they didn't have, they did the right thing to recommend to denounce, just go back and change, because this is residential. The gentleman stood up here before, he said, he told the people that he represented that I don't recommend you going back in and putting those thirteen houses there, because that was not what you all need to know. This is gonna come in the back door after if you go back in and vote this to go back into, uh, commercial. The key thing is, is that Ocean Springs is moving forward, and there's nothing wrong there, there's nothing wrong with progress. But when we go back in and we overbuild, and we go back, we try to squeeze people out, that's where the problem comes into play. God put you all in those seats. You need to seek the wisdom and knowledge of him to make the correct decision for Ocean Springs, not go back in and line someone pockets. The scripture tells us that the love of money is a root to all evil. And this is about the love of money. That's the bottom line up front. If you go further down on, where you go back to all those little, uh, I call them shotgun houses that right across from the school there, they go back in and I found a car for a record at those, you got short-term rentals. That, and that's actually what the bottom line is, come back in and put short-term rentals on MLK with those thirteen. Going back in, yeah, uh, a million or whatever it is, they're gonna go back in and sell it for. You go back in and you look at the space between them, that's not even conducive. Traffic, I've almost got killed twice on MLK trying to get across from our church parking lot to go to church. You, you, the both, the previous board went back in and put a track down, I did, it says it's twenty miles an hour, but people still don't pay attention to twenty miles an hour because they see a driving like a bad idea. And that's about nine up front. The key thing is, is that we need you, ladies and gentlemen, to search your hearts, pray to God, make the correct decision, and God's gonna be pleased with it, so when you lay your head down, you'll be alright night, you can sleep well. You notice you have done your job as an employee of us, because you all do work for us. There's still some loyalty in office. The board has changed, and we'll regard us pleased with that. We ask you to go back in and do the right thing. Manchester Fair County, have a nice day.
Good evening. Uh, Greg Gibson Ward One. We have had this conversation, I want to say that probably the last couple of months, about this piece of property. And when I look at the piece of property that he's wanting to build these homes on, and the home that he was talking about, that up there was a barber shop that was there, do we know if he had a permit to run that barber shop out of there? That's, that's the, the first answer. Secondly, when you look at the home that he's looking at, time it's gonna have to be demolished, he should have been cited. He should have had a citation day one. So, of course, we're not doing our job as public officials, not citing those homes who are not up to code. So, that should have been, day one, he should have been cited to get it cleaned up. Now, the, the grass, when I spoke last week, or last month at the planning commission, the grass was up this high. When I drove by there, I got a phone call, Greg, I said, yes, they cutting the grass now. I said, mm, I guess we grabbed their attention then. But what he's talking about, where Government Street is, that was old Highway Ninety, that was Ninety. That's where all the traffic flowed. Where you, where Krispy Kreme was located at, that's where my parents had to move their house, and they moved into the south side of railroad track, because we were on the north side of railroad track, because of the change that they were moving that, the current Highway Ninety and building that path there. So, we had to move. So, exclusively, we were blocked in and said, you're gonna be in this area, you're gonna be by the railroad track. And when we talk about up the road, down the road, in the playground, that's the middle, the playground where Macedonia sits at, that's where we used to play at, we would walk back and forth, up the road, down the road. And our parents would say, don't let your name beat your home, because if your name beat your home, you know what it is. We have got to be careful, we only have a few spots available downtown Ocean Springs, and you guys as a board gotta make a decision on what is gonna be in those spots. Right now, we're overdeveloped, it's too much, it's too much traffic on MLK, it's too much traffic when we come out of our church parking lot. We have customers from the Blue Dog Bistro parking in our parking lot. Do we call the tow truck and tell them to come pull those cars? Absolutely not. The board trustee wait until three or four o'clock when they shut down on Sunday, and then go back and lock the gate. That's what they do. We're being good neighbors, but we can be selfish if we choose to, but we choose not to. So, what we're asking you as a board, follow the rules, and you know what the rules are, and we know that all those homes are accessible, and we're not, we, we're not sitting up here saying we don't want development, you know? And just like the gentleman said about, we had an opportunity to pay for, but we didn't get a discounted rate. So, if we're gonna tell the truth, we, we need to tell the whole truth, but we didn't get a discounted rate. He wanted to sell it to us for seven hundred and fifty thousand, and the developer got it for six hundred thousand. So, let's be clear what we dealing with. In that neighborhood, when I say that neighborhood, that's our neighborhood, I grew up there. Some of y'all played on that playground, and you still take your grandkids out there to play on that playground too, or you come to functions out there on that playground. So, when they talk about what needs to be done at that facility, yes, that facility out there, MLK, needs to be upgraded. Yes, I did go and take pictures of all the parks in Ocean Springs and talked about equal funding for all parks, not just MLK park. But that park was neglected for ten-plus years. One bathroom and everybody else had two. So, again, do your part and do what's right. And when you look at that traffic study, you see people coming through Macedonia parking lot, going around the other end, trying to be, just to get ahead of traffic, we never say nothing, we never call the police. Just Sunday, like Deacon Lewis said, me and my daughter crossing, going to church, a man doing forty-five coming down there, and I said, Whitney, y'all pull her back so she won't get hit. So, it is a problem. So, if we're gonna add more to it, it's just gonna make it worse. And I don't think we have the infrastructure to handle all that at this point in time.
Dean Francis Rickman, fifteen eighteen quarter. I've been in Ocean Springs since nineteen fifty-seven as well, at the school of Mary City, that was my high school. I don't recall any of these buildings being built there lately. I can't believe that at one time, on the west side of the street, Martin Luther King, there were three nice houses in a small concrete block building that had been a barber shop or beauty shop out by the sidewalk on Government. Those houses were torn down, and actually, the property was a sale, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, if you believe that, looking at today's prices. What really bothers me, other than the fact that they're wanting to put so many structures on that small piece of property, is the fact that if you drop down Martin Luther King a lot, which I do, you'll notice that people are parking in the street. Now, there's a small street on either side of the parked area. And I don't know whether the people are going to eat at Blue Dog or where they're going, but there's plenty of people in the parking lot. I've also seen people park over in Dr. Prince's, only Dr. Fur's parking lot, and walk across the street going to the Blue Dog. So, if those people that have this property really want to do something constructive with it, let them put another parking lot there, because there's certainly more parking needed in the area. It bothers me to see all the old houses, not all of them are torn down, some of them are now law offices, insurance offices. I liked it when I could walk home in the afternoon to school and people lived there. My friend Leah Rollins lived on Government, now that house is a furbo. The only person I know that still lives down in town in that part is Dean, and she's got the house next to where Mr. Steelman, and at one time, I thought the only bar in Ocean Springs, and now it's As You Like It or something like that, a coffee shop. So, Ocean Springs is great. We've got, Lord is my help, that actually helps people. Our former mayor used to have front benches picked up if he ever saw anybody homeless living on them. We need to have a heart, the Bible tells us to love one another and to be kind. So, let's try to be kind and loving, and make Ocean Springs an even more residential and all area, instead of wanting to put up big things that's like fourteen pieces of houses or whatever, a small piece of property that maybe would hold three or four. I mean, I do take it that the piece that's in contract now, you've got a house here, you've got the one that he says it was a barber shop there, you've got one in the middle that looked like it was like three apartments or something. And I have noticed a bunch of stuff being put out by the street, so I'm assuming that the people that bought the property are making the people that were living there move, which is okay. Let them build something like houses that people can actually live in and not need fourteen or fifteen cars to park, when there's already so little parking that people are parking in the street. I thank you, I love Ocean Springs, and I want it to stay small and unique, because I think the reason that so many people come here is because it may remind you of where they grew up, a small town. And we don't need to dig some of the big ones, bars need, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Esther Payton Ward Two. Just to piggyback on some of the other things that have been stated prior to my, uh, my coming up, I am a member of Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church, uh, born and reared in Ocean Springs, and, um, that has always been our church home. I'm a part of that community, my family has a home within that community. As relates to what their prospective plans are for that property, on what we have heard, I do not feel that it is conducive to the area. MLK has, has been stated so many times before, it's already congested. And when there's events downtown and Washington Avenue is blocked off, MLK, that's your thoroughfare. And you have cars trying to get to Government Street, and the traffic is back on Highway Ninety, in the turn lane, back to Sheriff's State House. Then those who cross the track when they get impatient, as stated, they do the shortcut of coming through Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church parking lot. Did we say anything? No, we do not. As relates to the parking lot that we were blessed to build across the street from our church, as stated earlier, we have none members of Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church that park in that parking lot on Sunday. Are we ugly about it? Do we lock them in? Do we call the tow truck to have the car hauled off? No, we do not. We leave it open, and a member of our church comes back later on that afternoon and locks the gate. We're not about being mean spirited, we're not about being ugly. We want to get along with the community, because the people who live in that community, that is a quiet neighborhood. And the change that they're asking for, I just can't see it, I can't fathom it, I, I don't see it being conducive to the area, to the community. And he states that, yes, there have been changes within the area, all the changes that he stated were on Government Street, ninety-nine point nine percent of them. And as stated, MLK, there are properties on there, there is a church parking lot on there. What their plans are for that property, I do not know. But I pray that God touches whomever is in the plains, and if he's not right, that he will scatter the plains. Because, this time out, I'm about transparency, I'm about trustworthiness, I'm about honesty and communication. And I do not like when things are done underhanded. That's not fair to me, that's not fair to anyone in this city of Ocean Springs. Be honest, be trustworthy, be upright. And I'm a person like this, if I said it once, I can't say it twice. And I'm gonna be truthful, and if I said it, yes, I'm gonna say I said it. And I'm gonna be upfront with you, and I'm gonna be honest with you, whether it's good or bad. And that's what needs to happen here, because transparency, it is not happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're at thirty minutes on this, I'd like to extend it for another ten minutes, so that would be two more speakers.
Uh, Julia Lyon, one two. I'm not gonna go through everything I already went through, because I think it's kinda in cover. Now, I do know that this was heard before, and it's being heard a second time, and the reason, I think, is, uh, Mr. Scruggs wrote a letter to the planning department, and one of the things he said was, at the planning commission meeting, the application and presentation for the rezoning heavily considered the proposed use of the property and not the requirements for the rezoning. I don't know if he's talking about the people that presented it or what, but I don't think people usually get a second shot, because they didn't present all their information. Uh, and the other thing he stated is, while a number of individuals spoke against the rezoning, none of the arguments focused on a lack of change. So, he's saying that nobody really talked about the lack of change. Well, people really don't have to. I mean, he's the one that has to prove that there's been a change, and it wasn't proven, and they've been given a second chance with, uh, some kind of land, uh, application that they added on. And I just want to say that, one of the things he says, and this is what I'm sort of gonna emphasize, it says, review of the area demonstrates significant changes have occurred over the last thirty years. Despite two comprehensive plans and a pending third plan, a new United Development, uh, UDC, there has been no comprehensive rezoning or evaluation of the district boundaries. Uh, the subject properties were designated as R three from nineteen eighty-four until two thousand nineteen, when the property was reclassified as RD. I do think the changes are supposed to be since the last time the zoning was looked at, which was two thousand nineteen. So, the houses disappearing in two thousand ten don't count, and anything else he said. Um, and as far as the, uh, as far as the, the parking lot, um, it was a conditional use they got, and I don't think that changes the neighborhood. I mean, it's a community church, you have to extend your parking, that was the only place to extend it. I know St. John's, and I've talked to other people about this, they have extended their parking lot at one point, all the way up to Jackson, that doesn't, it wouldn't be used as a reason the neighborhood has changed. So, that's all I'm gonna say, and I think the planning commission got it right both times, and I'm hoping, and I think this board will too.
Asher Waller, Ward One, just wanted to reiterate some of this thing, but maybe not in maybe even a different way. Um, as was stated in the presentation, people do avoid downtown because of traffic, and I know of three churches where I have connections to that are downtown that have to deal with this. And so, if, if that's the reasoning and, and things like that, why wouldn't, why wouldn't Macedonia want to try to continue their church services in peace, or as peacefully as they can? St. James is surrounded by massive buildings, I know First Baptist is locked in, and, and having a church downtown comes with certain responsibilities. So, that was one of the things that I just wanted to say. So, if we are considering a zoning change, you know, you're, you're gonna change the community, and you're also gonna impact the church, since this is, let's, let's just call it state to state, this is what this is about. The other thing that I'm, I'm really troubled by, and I don't know how to, how to get around this, but when things are said to be non-conforming, I get that, I understand that, but I also understand that at some point, the, the reason why it's non-conforming is because the city made it that way. So, to, to, to come and say, oh, it's not, well, it, it had to be conforming at some point, in some way and time, otherwise it wouldn't have gotten that way. And, um, sorry. My phone went to, um, yeah, that, that's pretty much the main part that I wanted to say. Also, just to say that the parking lot at Macedonia, it's part of the community. I remember a time where, when, if you didn't get to Macedonia at a certain time, you were gonna be parking at, and you're gonna be parking on the park. It's nice not to have to park your car in mud. I, and it's, it's really nice just for them to be able to have the space to grow, it's a community center. The members of the church don't necessarily live in that more, but they go there, and it's a part of their life, and it's a part of, and it's a part of the community. And so, that's, that's all I have to, um, say about that. Thank you for your, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Joshua Lord, owner of Blue Dog Bistro, appreciate your time. Just a couple of statements, I hope that we get an alignment a little bit better, and there's no longer the disconnect in the city with the planning commission and the board, as far as this is about the fourth time that I've been in about rezoning on MLK over the six years that I've owned Blue Dog. Um, I'm also own another business for seventeen years, and a resident of Ocean Springs for twelve as well. Rezoning or not, the traffic will not change on MLK. Unfortunately, that's the hard truth, and it seems that maybe we need to discuss with the city more about infrastructure and helping change in that area to improve everyone in that area.
Asher, please address it.
I'm sorry, as we, as, you know, we support the church, we support the community, the homeowners, everyone in that area, but possibly it's more of an infrastructure issue than it is a rezoning issue, because the city is doing nothing but growing, of course. Uh, the UDC plan growing, it's growing in only one direction, which is technically where downtown can kind of grow, which is that direction. Um, there's not a perfect answer tonight, from y'all's side, from the city's, from the residents' side, honestly. Um, and zoning changes are probably not gonna be it tonight. Uh, I will say that if, if the developers are coming in to do something that is completely against that area, then of course that should not be, they shouldn't be allowed to do that. I think possibly, you know, people need to be open-minded though, because if it is residential commercial, then they do have the ability to do residential commercial right there in that area, which is a benefit to the city, I think, as far as tax dollars, and you're also providing more residential area in an area that there is a lack of residential at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
My name's Brantley Groom, my family owns the property at Groom's Grocery. Basically, it's a city block that's located next to all this property that's being developed. I think the problem, sitting here listening to everybody talk, and I discussed this a while back, I thought, we keep getting in magazines, the city does, for the best beach house, best beach area in the country. And all y'all doing is pulling more and more people in. As far as everybody here is concerned, our families are growing. My daughter is planning to move over here from Mobile, and she can't, she can't touch property in Ocean Springs, there's no way. Developers coming in, we got a lot of property, we would love to develop it, but this money is an issue. Do I support this? Well, I have to listen to everybody in this room, and I just leave it up to y'all, y'all wanna make the right decision.
Thank you, Brant. Okay, anybody else would take one more speaker, and then we'll wrap this up. We'll, we'll let you rebut, I was giving one more. Nobody else? Okay, Mr. Donovan, you're welcome to step up.
Thank you, guys. Uh, it's Donovan, but I'm going to find Dr. Lawrence first. Um, I did wanna point out that there was still a lot of discussion about the old plan, which, as I indicated, uh, several times before, that that plan is not compliant and cannot be done, and it represents a subdivision, which means that he would have to come back with planning commission and this body. So, it doesn't matter if he drew a plan that had two units, five units, or fifty-eight units, it does not matter what he draws, because it has to come before you for approval, and I don't know how to say that, how many times to say it, but it's just a pretty picture, or not a pretty picture, that has no bearing on this application. Whatever is done on that property, if it is subdivided, will come before you, and hopefully we can work together to put together a good plan. Uh, Mr. Jewell thinks that we don't need a singular drive out of there. Uh, I beg to differ, residential actually allows people to back out on the street, because with the way the property is right now, he could easily put in four new houses on that street that actually back out into MLK. Now, uh, that does not sound like a good idea, but... But that's what may be, what we may be forced to do if we're forced to deal with the lots as they exist and not as a redevelopment plan. We can hold hands and try to do something that is correct. You know, everybody, I don't really want to get into specifics, but I do want to say that while Macedonia Church was represented very well here tonight, I still did not hear a lot of addresses or indication that the people actually lived in this immediate area. Front big, St. Martin, down on, you know, in Kane Break and all kinds of locations, but not in this area. So they're not really neighbors that are affected by the change. They're just don't want it to change. And that's finally good. But this is a property owner who invested a lot of money in the property based on this location. And we're trying to do a plan that we think the city will approve. And the city has to approve, otherwise it does not get built, you know, if we get the CMX one zoning. I'll be happy to answer questions. Sorry we all went walking on, but I do thank you for your time.
More to have any questions regarding... Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, Alderman Hinton, second by Alderman Pfeiffer. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to deny the rezoning request.
I'll second.
Have a motion for Alderman Stennis and a second by Alderman Tillis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. I said... All right, thank you. Now we move on to agenda, public comment. Public is invited to address the board for five minutes each for a maximum period of 30 minutes on regarding issues listed on this agenda. Please identify yourself and the agenda item that you are speaking on, please. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Judge Jewell, Ward 3. Before I go over just really quickly, I realize I only have three minutes. The items under old business. The comprehensive plan, I've spoken out publicly on this mini conference, spoken out of the planning committee, I know it was sort of run back into the city all of this arena. And I just want to say I'm not per se a plan. I just, the plan, the way it's arranged now, it's so confusing is the word I'll use versus the old plan. I think we need a plan, we should develop a plan. This plan is probably not the plan for us. So I would say no to that issue. Adjusting the speed on Ocean Springs Road, plan, we brought that up, this messenger. That road is, was poorly designed. If you look at the traffic flow that goes down Ocean Springs Road and has to traverse through the traffic circle, that circle should be twice the size, it should be on the size of the Promenade or Wool Market or even Buc-Ee's. It can't handle the traffic. I was there where I almost witnessed a wreck where it was a Saturday afternoon where two vehicles were pulling these large trailers to cut grass. And they moved into the intersection and for some reason stopped and it backed up all the traffic. And people blowing their horns, it got... And what happens at times is it backs up on tonight. So if anything y'all consider tonight, I would ask y'all to consider closing that left-hand lane, marking it off with signage or stripes on the street. Because two lanes of traffic will pull up. It's only one lane now. The one, the left, the left-hand lane moved into the back of Ocean Springs Hospital and the hospital clinics that were back there. That's no longer available. Everybody has to merge into that right-hand lane. It's very confusing if you've not been to that circle recently. So I would suggest y'all strike that also. Everybody's perfectly aware it's a non-use. Get it in once you cross overnight. The resolution to dissolve the RDA, absolutely in favor of and recommend highly that this board consider that. The board as it is should be dissolved. If this board decides to reconstitute it into whatever means that y'all want that's more representative of the city and our wards and is a function of this board and reports directly to this board, I would support that. But as it is now, I support totally that being dissolved. And Mr. Tillis's discussion on short-term rentals, I just wanted to provide my input now. I'm totally opposed to the expansion of short-term rentals. I'm opposed to commercialization of our historic residential neighborhoods. I'm opposed to that hopscotching that's going on with short-term rentals, some jumping out, some jumping in. I think we should put a moratorium on it immediately and then initiate a process to downsize those into our communities. If they want to be in commercial districts or in the downtown districts, I'm not opposed to that. But when they're in our residential neighborhoods, I'm extremely opposed to that. And then on new business, consideration devoted to top resolutions for formal numbering of the system. I'm absolutely in favor of that. I think that would serve the city, our council, our Board of Alderman well, and the residents when they're trying to look through these resolutions. Now, the final thing I want to address, and I'm unsure whether I should say this under public comments or non-agenda public comments, but I want to bring this up. I did a public records request for Patty Gaston's last day, which was the 18th. She attended a conference date through the 21st through the 23rd. And I did a request for the invoice for that, which was clearly made out to the city of Ocean Springs and has her name on it. Now typically what happens when people attend conferences, they're put in the consent agenda. That was not put in the consent agenda. Where it is now, where I think it is on the agenda, is buried in the city clerk's section where I think it's on page 63 or 64, there's a reimbursement for attendance to Mississippi Peninsula for the exact same amount of that invoice. So I just call into question, have we allowed a non-city employee to attend a conference on our behalf? And we pay for it? Just clarification, I'd like...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bill?
William Better, Ward 1. I'd like to talk about speed limit, Ocean Springs Road. Six months and one day ago, the previous administration unanimously voted in to change the ordinance, speed limit in the area from Dana to Roundabout to 25. I talked to this messenger on the phone, took a conversation, sent her an email with some data attached. I forwarded that email to each one of you. Why did that get changed? Ward 3 and 5 were in the same seats then. The mayor was the Alderman at large. We had a gentleman, the way knows who that gentleman was and where he worked, to talk to how we got to 25 miles an hour, based on the proximity of pathways. Bobby explained to me what a pathway was, where two bicycles can pass, about two bicycles can ride at rest versus a sidewalk where two people can walk. You got a pathway. There's a lot of people using the pathway, there is, a lot of people out there. 25 miles an hour is based on all this data that drove it to every 25 miles an hour. And this is more to Felix, previous administration. And their workers, and all the bits, backs, did plans, it said to speed them a week 25. Nobody noticed that this, they were putting up 25 mile an hour speed zones. I dug it out. I dug out the bits, backs. Presented to the board. They missed it, each one of them. I'm not sure it stays involved, House involved. Yeah, 25. They had to, they had to vote 25 in. Good, no questions. Will you go raise it? Yeah. Is there a speed problem? Sure. Yeah, that's a speed problem. Speed report. 12,000 cars between 45 and 31. Here in the south of Stoli Hill Drive to the Roundabout. Almost 13,000 cars between 31 and 37. The speed setting to the north of the Riley, they clocked one at 94. Do we have a speed problem? Yes. Is it just isolated to there? No, throughout the city. People getting hocked on the horn, hit the fender, you know, almost getting run over and bumped, whatever. It's throughout the city. Or enforcement, they do the best they can. But when they're answering 1,900 calls in a month, contacts. You have to understand, a given contact or citizens could tie up two to three policemen for a period of town, maybe hours. Follow up, follow up, follow up, more investigation, all this stuff. They're not after enforcing all the time because they're doing other police work. You can holler enforcement all day, that's why. Every time I talk to the mayor, he's always talking to me about 30 miles an hour. Ward 1 talking to me all the time about 30 miles an hour. What does the safety data support 30 miles an hour? That's a good question to go back to that engineer and ask that question. If so, I'd support it. Okay, Mayor? I said it, anybody? He's been hammering me. Now, if you go above 30 miles an hour, you got a whole new set of problems. Golf carts. All these people have gone out there and bought golf carts, ordered golf carts. About to order a golf cart. It, it, it winds right, it goes deep into Ward 6. Golf carts. Oh, down to Heritage Woods, CC Camp. They can make their way up Grove, Land Dana. Go CC Camp across to the vineyard and come back around them. Yeah, there's a lot of golf carts on Ocean Springs Road now. You got a problem there, 30 miles an hour, do it. Leave it 35. The Riley, 45 on out to Dinner State. You know, the islands were put in for safety and turn. Leave it 25 until you get an answer from that engineer. Those is...
Thank you. I made it, sir.
Right, that's you, Ward 6. Oh, gosh, so much to talk about all that. If we can make it off of CC Camp...
I don't know about it, by the way. Don't mind that, I do.
But, um...
What are you talking about?
Uh, if you can make it drop...
No, 6B.
He's talking about the speed limit.
Correct. So, you know, a couple of things I think about, you know, when I, I keep hearing the points, "Safety, safety, safety." I hear that a lot. And then I look at other roads, I go one street over to Grove. By the way, it's not heavily residential, Ocean Springs Road, absolutely not, on that road itself. I go one street over to Grove when, what do I see?
Right next to the road.
A sidewalk. What speed limit do I see?
30 miles per hour.
I go to any city on the coast, what can I find?
Right next to the road.
A sidewalk. With speeds higher than that. I feel like Sunkist did a good job with it, where hops varying arrows. You've got sidewalks directly next to the road, a small patch of grass, 35 miles per hour. So do we have a crisis there as far as safety? I really don't think we do. I don't think that that's reasonable. I would say from a public safety standpoint, I mean, I can speak on that a little bit. Couple of things I would, I would say that the medians are too tight, as M. Dodd has pointed out. They pointed out a couple of the things, the road width, I mean, if you're driving, say, a fire bumper, it's not the best width when you go over through those medians. Somebody had brought up a trailer bringing that through. I mean, it just... The road's designed for one purpose, is to slow traffic, obviously. But, you know, no one thought about all the Ward 6 residents. Now we have to contend with them, those are the people that drive through that road. I just, for starters, I feel like it's more of a golf cart issue than a safety issue. I don't think that that's reasonable. I believe if you talk to M. Dodd, you will hear 30 miles per hour. Verify it yourself. I think the main thing with this really just we need to look at is there's some kind of middle ground. And really I question as far as the previous administration, was it the right choice? When I look at Sunkist, they've got golf cart paths all over on these streets. But the main thoroughfare, the main artery does not permit them. They can only cross the road, as with Highway 90, any main artery. So that's my main thing, I say, "Gosh, we've got ambulances coming down this road. We've got no shoulder, we've got a road that's not wide enough. Why are we putting golf carts on there?" I would say for people, if it's important to you, put a golf cart path. Problem solved, you know? But I just, if we're talking about safety, I feel like that that's a big issue. As a second point, I'm vehemently against Steve's topic, increasing the short-term rentals. I just don't think it... You know, you see where the city is going. The city's kind of tried to engineer a lot of changes that may not have come naturally. And not all of them have been good changes. I feel like limiting that would be a good step in the right direction. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since this is my first time here, I want to congratulate you on your election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need, need your name and board...
Yeah, Rick Canan, and this is about the speaking. I live just off Ocean Springs Road behind the lighthouse. And I pretty much think that the 25 mile an hour speed limit is ridiculous. Past administrations have wasted money, had the chance, the opportunity, they have multiple lane roads. This is a major artery, one of four major arteries into and out of Ocean Springs. And you have almost a mile of 25, mile an hour speed limit. And that road, two-lane, used to be 45 from Highway 57 all the way to Highway 90. And there really was no safety issue, at least automobiles wise, pedestrian wise. And still isn't. Still is not. Why that section is 25, almost a mile long? And I know it because I drive it every day. And I see the cars behind me pile up, tailgate. You want to talk about a safety issue, they're now starting to pass on double yellow lines because of this low speed. That's a safety issue. Head-on traffic coming and they're passing on double yellow lines. There is absolutely no reason why there is not a 45 mile an hour speed limit, at least to Dana or Dina. And then 35 to say King Henry. Then if you want to reduce it to 30 for the Roundabout, that's okay too. Riley Road, Groveland, and I heard somebody talk about sidewalks being close to the road. Spanish Trails has a 35 mile an hour speed limit. And the sidewalk is right next to it. I have no, I've heard of nobody having safety issues between automobiles and people walking. This is a golf cart issue. Golf carts have no business being on a major highway, coming into and out of Ocean Springs. If you're going to let it happen there, then why not Highway 90? And why not Washington Avenue? Absolutely no reason. They want, there's three places really for golf carts. The golf courses, downtown Ocean Springs, and in the local neighborhoods. I mean, even Groveland has a higher speed than what Ocean Springs Road, which is a major, and going to be worse with the annexation, traffic's going to be worse. And these individuals, including myself, they get backed up, both of the cars, it's going to get worse. They get impatient, they tailgate, pretty soon they're passing double yellow line. They get impatient, they tailgate, pretty soon they're passing double yellow line, it's happened multiple times. And it's hard to drive. I, the other day, I came out of the gas station, police vehicle was in front of them. I pulled out with them, and I drove north, northeast, following them. And in no time at all, they were going over forty miles an hour. I backed, backed off to my normal twenty-five. Because if it had been me in front and the police officer behind, I'd be charged for driving fifteen over. So, please, I urge you, at the very least, increase that speed limit at least to thirty-five miles an hour. And I suggest all the way to King Henry. There's no reason to reduce it before that. If you want to reduce it a little bit for, in, in preparation for the roundabout, that's okay. I don't have a problem with that. But at least make it thirty-five. And I heard somebody talk a few minutes ago about traffic backing up under ninety with the roundabout. Poor planning. You know, Ocean Springs Road from ninety essentially was four-lane, from ninety to King Henry, you're four. Essentially four-lane. It could still be four-lane if they knocked out the medians on either side of that roundabout. They enlarged the roundabout to two lanes, and you'd have an efficient pathway on Ocean Springs Road either way with very little backup. Very much similar to what's on Division, Biloxi, and also Airport Road in Cope. So, I urge you, if you have some extra money to utilize, work on that roundabout. But I urge you to raise that speed limit to thirty-five.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else like to address the board?
Hey, Randy Page from Ward Six. I just want to reiterate what everyone is saying about the speed change on Ocean Springs Road. I'm not going to say the exact same things that they said, but I agree with all the things that they're saying. I want to tell you about something that happened this week. I was on, just got off of Highway fifty-seven on to Ocean Springs Road, right at the big S-curve. There's a guy on a bike right in the middle of the road backing everybody up. He almost got hit two or three times. And my thirteen-year-old said, "What's fun," it's not funny, obviously, but what's funny about this is it's forty-five here. And this guy's in the middle of the road, but when they have their own space, it's twenty-five. And so, that kind of prompted a conversation with him, and it, it did make me think that this just doesn't make sense when they have, you know, we, I have lived off of that road almost thirty-five years. And I, every single day for, until, you know, until the sidewalks, you know, we, I have shared that road with people in wheelchairs. I have shared that road with people in strollers, which is obviously crazy, but people did it, and it was forty-five the whole time. And then now they have their, they have a space where they can be safe, and it's twenty-five. It just doesn't add up, it just doesn't make sense to me. And especially if you don't have that going all the way down, which we do not want, twenty-five miles an hour all the way down, for sure. But it's just, in the area that we're sharing with a bicycle is, is, is twenty mile an hour faster than the area that, where they have their own space. So, to me, that's just not, that just makes no logical sense. So, please consider raising that. And I would agree, back to forty-five if possible, but, but thirty-five would be manageable. Especially when you look at the Groveland and the other places like that, that are doing something totally different. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and anybody else like to address the board? Okay, we will move on to old business. We need to discuss approval of Ocean Springs 2045 Conference of Plan Draft Update. RPC recommends denial. Wade.
I'd be brief about this, just kind of give you a history of where we are on this. You said that with the planning commission discussed this at their July eight meeting, they discussed the merits of the conference plan and other issues of it. And they did recommend a denial of approval of the plan. In your potential report, there's a, a kind of history of the conference plans in Ocean Springs. Going on about how the, where we got here, and leading up to looking to in and the issues of that after the agreement. Also, there's a list of the plans that are meetings that have been held on, the current 2045 Conference of Plan, back from September of 2023, October of 2024, November of that same year. And then finally, the Planning Commission Work Session in April of this year. Kind of gives you a history of where the planning commission's come from on that. As I said, they did, it is coming to you with a poor discussion about what to deal with, that the planning commission is recommending its denial of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Anybody have any comments on that, or? On the board?
Do not.
Do not? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to item B on old business. We'll discuss suggesting the speed limit on Ocean Springs Road, Ms. Messenger.
So, the purpose of me placing this on the agenda was, I wanted to open the floor back up to hear from my fellow Alderman and the citizens, predominantly of Ward Six, but all wards adjacent as well, and as well as other members of the community and other boards, because that's a heavily trafficked road. As someone said, it's a major artery from the interstate into the city. Looked out that way for several years, and personally, I don't see a safety issue and the need for the decrease. But my purpose is to be the voice for my ward, that's what I was elected to do. And they voiced to me that they are discontent with this, and for multiple reasons. And I wanted to have a bare comparison from other individuals through the board, and again, my fellow Alderman.
Yeah, I've got a few things to say. So, you know, I had originally brought this up at our last board meeting. And, you know, my concern was to, you know, kind of get the traffic moving a little bit better. And as I started to research it, you know, I, I reached out to Wade Morgan, the Interplanning Director. I reached out to Ben Smith, which is who designed this thoroughfare. And then I reached out to the Chief of Police. And basically, here's what I found out. So, the twenty-five mile hour was designed with all of the new subdivisions coming in. You know, yeah, it used to be forty-five, and yeah, we used to travel it, and we didn't have these subdivisions. But now, we've got, you know, Calioco, Monticello, Toscano, Arbor, and the other few, and there's more coming. So, this is a very widely-used thoroughfare. But at the same time, this is a safety concern. You've got all of these different subdivisions that are coming out, and they're trying to get on this road. And what car's doing forty-five? No, they're not doing forty-five, they're doing fifty-five. So, if we even try to raise the speed limit up, we're just going to raise it up, and then we're going to raise it up however the speed that they want it to go. So, you've got school buses coming down here, you've got kids out there on the road. So, it's a safety concern. So, originally, you know, I was kind of in favor, but after I did my research, I don't think that we need to raise the speed limit, we need to leave it as is. So, I'm not going to be in favor of, you know, moving the twenty-five to thirty at this point. So, why don't we do this? Why don't we take a pause? I talked to Ben Smith, and he's willing to do another traffic study in six months. And then if we can get some more data, some more research, this, this road's only been opened up a few months. And I know it's a hot topic, I know we're not going to make everybody happy. I don't think it's a golf cart thing. They were recommending twenty-five miles an hour while this thing was built. It wasn't recommended after the golf carts. So, at this point now, I'm going to be okay with just leaving it as is. Those are, those are my thoughts.
Steve, you're exactly right, except for the fact that the project was designed around the speed limits that are there. So, we can't arbitrarily just change them at this point without going back, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, without going back with a study with MDOT to see if the roads even will allow increased speed limits, correct? Thank you.
All right. The concern that I have on Ocean Springs Road is the speed limit coming down Ocean Springs Road with golf carts getting on Ocean Springs Road. Traffic coming into Ocean Springs, people are not paying attention, you're going to have golf carts get out on Ocean Springs Road. We're going to ultimately have a bad accident on our hands. All golf carts on Government Street and everything have lower speed limits coming in, in Ocean Springs. Ocean Springs Road does not. You know, if I moved for anything, it would be to temporarily put a moratorium on golf carts on that, not adjust the speed limits.
Ms. Messenger, thank you for asking for all the input and discussion. And I know that's, that was your intent, to hear both sides and, and get an idea of where we need to go from here. So, if you want to make any type of motion, go right ahead, if not, we can move to the next item.
I'd like to make one more comment, if that's all right. And I'd like to, I agree with taking a pause, it's, again, it's a hot topic, I agree. So, I'd like for it to be thoughtful and have everyone have the opportunity to kind of weigh in. I've read comments online and take those into account as well, and heard from citizens. Excuse me. But in terms of what MDOT said regarding the speed, according to Ross Baker, the, the request was submitted by the City of Ocean Springs for multiple design variances on the project back in September of twenty-two. They approved the design variance request that included a reduction in speed later that same month. Our design manual has a speed of forty-five miles per hour, and the requested speed was thirty-five miles per hour. MDOT did not recommend the speed reduction, but approved the request of the city.
And designed the project around the requested speed.
One, one more thing, you know, if I didn't make it clear, you know, it, there's a speeding problem on one Ocean Springs Road. So, the data and the research, if you, if it's twenty-five, they're doing thirty-five. If you move it up to thirty, they're going to be doing forty. The thirty-five, they're doing forty-five. The forty-five, they're doing fifty-five, if not sixty. You've got all these trucks coming in, all this new development, you know, these heavy payloads. People are pulling out of these subdivisions, you know, and, and trying to get on the road. So, it's back to, you know, the research, and it's definitely just a safety concern, as far as I'm concerned. So, again, I, not everybody's going to be happy with this, but I'm fine with just keeping it the way it is. And let's look at, you know, in six months down the road, look at another traffic study.
As to follow that up with the safety and everything, I really urge the, the board to consider putting a moratorium on golf carts from Deena to the roundabout. If we're talking about safety, people come down Ocean Springs Road way too fast, somebody's going to get hurt. I've been in a wreck on that road. I know that road.
All right.
I think that's a valid point that Matt can make.
We're going to move on to the consideration to adopt a resolution to dissolve the Ocean Springs redevelopment authority. Alderman Pfeifer.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, I'm going to present, or I have presented a resolution to formally dissolve the Ocean Springs redevelopment authority. This action reflects both the public's overwhelming feedback and our responsibility to ensure transparency and trust in redevelopment efforts. Residents have made their concerns abundantly clear. And I think when the public no longer trust a public body to operate in their best interest, it's our duty to make this corrective action. So, I feel this resolution honors the voices of our residents and reinforces our commitment to good governance. I respectfully ask my colleagues to vote in favor of this resolution so we can move forward with a clean slate and public trust restored. Thank you.
So, Shannon, what is this, what does this do if we don't do anything? What does it do?
What does it do? I think it leaves a body open. And if you do that, there's, um, I think maintaining an inactive RDA could still act under its name without new appointments or public direction. I think it's.
By who?
We don't know. It hasn't been dissolved.
The board's got an appointment.
We have to appoint them.
We got to appoint them.
I understand.
The way that this has been handled, uh.
We still have an eminent domain component that I don't think is.
Urban renewal.
Right now, we have a empty board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that board was put in place for the urban renewal designation.
Mm-hmm. If we, if we don't suspend it, it keeps the entity alive, and we leave, we're leaving the door open, and it's not proper public oversight.
Basically, we're sitting with a, with a empty board, with no, no members, and there's nobody can do anything with an empty board. But your resolution is moving to dissolve, so is that in a form of a motion, or?
Yeah, it is a form of a motion. I would like to make a motion to formally dissolve the Ocean Springs redevelopment authority.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It needs to be a roll call.
Well, I, I, did y'all want discussion after the first, the motion and the second? Y'all want any more discussion?
No.
If we dissolve this thing, or if we butt on this, Shannon, we're not jeopardizing any type of funds that potentially that, that we can get to help move the Public Service Works Department all along.
We are not.
We're not.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
As have. We'll move on to discuss the short-term rentals. Alderman, tell us.
Okay, I, I know I had heard somebody mention talking about raising the short-term rentals. By no means am I in favor of raising the short-term rentals. I would like for us to open the discussion up with the short-term rentals. And I have a motion that I'm going to make, but at this point now, I'd like to be able to hear everybody else's input.
All right. I'm going to go into this one, this is something that's close to me, eight years on the Planning Commission, dealing with short-term rentals. The way that it was designed, the cap did get increased, we do have a waiting list. The way that it needs to roll out, and the way the Planning Commission has discussed in past, is to put a moratorium on any new applicants coming onto the waiting list to let the waiting list play itself out, and then look at doing a nutrition on the cap, possibly lessening the cap. Also, within the short-term rentals is the overlay districts that were basically, that do not have caps with the STRs. So, that is my thoughts. I'd like to hear the rest of the board.
Anybody else have any input?
I am also in favor of reducing the number of short-term rentals. I probably haven't thought as far down the road as Matt, but the one thing I, I am in favor of, if we have a short-term rental that doesn't renew, then that's, you know, we would just lower the amount of short-term rentals that are available.
So, the way that the Planning Commission thought about it was that we have a waiting list that is not a very big waiting list, but is to put a moratorium on anybody coming onto the waiting list to go, when we have an application, basically roll off, that next person on the waiting list would take that. Waiting list would roll itself down to nobody being on the waiting list, and then we would look at doing the nutrition of taking away from the cap after the waiting list was completed. That would be fair to all residents of Ocean Springs, and also roll it back in a proper way.
So, basically, the short-term rentals were, the best way I can understand it is, you know, they were presented to be able to track them and be able to bring more tourism into the city of Ocean Springs. into the city of Ocean Springs, but nobody could see it. But what it's done is it's disrupted a lot of the long-term neighborhoods, especially downtown, you know, in, uh, in Karen's district. Uh, so, you know, we've heard a lot of negativity about it over the last year. So, you know, I ran on the premise that we needed to do something with short-term rentals, and there's a lot of things that we need to get done that people are asking about, but, you know, just keep in mind is, you know, we're, we're doing a lot tonight. So, with the short-term rentals, you know, I'm gonna be in favor of lowering the amount in, not only in the residential areas, but also in the commercial overlay. And what I'm suggesting is, is that we make a motion tonight, and agree with Matthew, we need to make a moratorium on it, and then let's send it back to the planning department. Let's do our research, and then let them present it back to us, and then get some more comments, and, but let's, let's do some research over the next couple of months and make a wise decision on this. You know, if you got the problem with these people that invested a lot of money, and in the event that they sell that house, you know, what's, what's the locality of it if they were selling it as a short-term rentals? But, you know, I've heard that, well, they would just lose it. Well, I mean, I don't know, there may be a legal issue here. So, let's take it, send it back to the planning department, planning commission, and then let's, let them present it to us, and let's find out what all the legal issues are. But I, I'm in favor of, you know, bringing the amount down to a lower, lower number. I don't know what that is, but let's hear from the, uh, the planning commission and the department.
Let's hear from our legal counsel.
Can, when a house...
How much we're gonna get sued for taking these rights away?
If a house sells, the short-term rental doesn't go with it.
No. No, that is correct, it does not.
Yeah.
So, but I think, you know, listening to the legal counsel on it, the, the best way to just temporarily pause on it and look at it is to put a moratorium on any new applications going onto the waiting list until we have a clear understanding from the planning department and planning commission.
All right, so, we're just, we're not limited to discussing the amount of short-term rentals, 'cause there's another issue I'd like us to delve into. Um, we've talked about buffer zones before. I know there are some permanent residents that are flanked, sometimes two or three sides, by a short-term rental. I think we could do a better job maybe looking at, I don't, I don't know, I'm just shooting from the hip, uh, so many per block, or, uh, you know, a, a buffer zone of so many feet apart between short-term rentals to prevent somebody from being enveloped in short-term rentals around their personal property.
I agree.
And that, that can be addressed in the planning commission also, and the legal council, 'cause I know there's issues with that also, but, uh, so, do you, one of you wanna make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion, we put a moratorium on all short-term rentals, including the commercial, and of course, you know, if you're already on the waiting list, then you're gonna be okay, but at this point now, I wanna make a motion to, um, you know, include the...
Is it a moratorium for no one added to the waiting list?
Nope, at this point.
But not necessarily...
No new applications to the waiting list, but...
Right, not...
See, uh, there is no waiting list for the commercial. Commercial's unlimited, in a commercial, um...
Okay, let's put a moratorium on the commercial overlay.
The...
As far as any new applications.
It doesn't have to be approved.
Yeah, I don't think a commercial need to be in it.
That doesn't need to be in, need to be with the overlay.
Just the overlay district.
Okay, in the commercial overlay.
Well, no, it's the commercially, if it's commercially zoned, it's by right. If it's residential in one of the overlay districts, it was treated as commercial. But, so that's two different things. I mean, you could say, should moratorium on that, it's only a handful, really, of properties that that impacts.
On the commercial or the residential?
On residential in one of those overlay districts. Resident, commercial, if it's own commercial, it, there wasn't, because it's already a commercially zoned property. So, the limit is only on the residential properties.
Is this something, maybe we could look into more of the inner workings of the overlay, and we look at just the outside of the overlay tonight?
I would recommend the moratorium on the waiting list, don't add any more to the waiting list, and send the rest of the planning commission to review and bring back to the board.
That's, that's what we did last time you considered raising it, which just didn't take anymore until we could come back with a recommendation, and I'll catch Amanda on the, I'll get her to do that.
That way you stop any additional application.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a mo- motion to, uh, stop any more new applicants for the residential.
Second.
Yeah, a motion on the tillus, second by Alderman Hinton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That'll all be addressed with the planning commission. Okay, on to new business. We have an oath of office to perform, and we've got, uh, we're gonna do the oath of office for our new city clerk, Christine Lard, and our deputy clerk, Ms. Vicky Huppie, will help out with this. Does anyone have a glass? If you can try to make anything up for our piece of glass.
Hi, Christine Lard, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
At the Stephen Lard's solemn swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified from holding the office of city clerk of the city of Ocean Springs.
That I am not disqualified from holding the office of city clerk of the city of Ocean Springs.
Mississippi.
Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which...
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which...
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
We're looking to authorize the city attorney to amend the urban renewal plan resolution, and that was requested by Alderman Dennis.
Yes, I just wanted to look at the urban renewal plan. We have four parcels on the Pine Drive, uh, there's two across the street, and two, and I don't think this includes the public works parcel. Um, I just wanted some discussion of, is it necessary, do we need to remove those, uh, parcels from the urban renewal plan? And, um, Carolyn, you might can answer some of these questions about, will it affect funding for cleanup if we did that? Um, there's a couple of other things, um, like, the, the areas that don't need the cleanup across the street, um, is it necessary that those stay on urban renewal, or, I guess I just want some input.
Right. Um, all I can say is, right now, any of the funding that we have in place or that we've requested is not affected by it, but that's not meaning going forward that there might be opportunities that we wouldn't be able to, it, it wouldn't help favorably. Um, it's more helpful to the privately owned parcels, I'd say, than the publicly owned ones. Um, it doesn't put anything on it other than it documents it as a need to redevelop moving forward for them. Um, I have to look into it more, I wasn't really prepared to, uh, to get into it tonight, but I can say no current funding would be jeopardized. And, but the public works parcel is in the plan. It was, it was those, it was the public works parcel, the one to the north and the ones across the street.
So, you're saying there's five?
No, there's four.
But it specifically won't affect the public works, the current public...
With nothing that I have right now.
Thank you.
Correct, yes. Um, but, you know, we're always looking at this funding, I can't say looking forward, but nothing that's in place right now.
And I also, uh, reached out to Mr. Troy Johnston, the attorney for the MML, and, uh, he said the exact same thing, that he does not see, if it is dissolved, that it will hurt any of our funding that we would need for any type of cleanup, uh, moving forward. And he said the same thing, as far as the private piece of parcels would benefit from that more so than, than we would. If we do leave it in place, we would need a, a motion to appoint the board of Alderman as overseers of the, of the urban renewal, uh, now that the RDA is dissolved. So, I, I don't, either way, that the board, the board wishes, I think we'll be fine. Uh, so, we just, y'all have, have some discussion, and we can go from there.
Well, what, what happens if the, the city were to inherit that property? Let's just say that, like, you know, say, hey, we're washing our hands of it.
Pardon me.
Well, I'm saying this with them still recovering the liability of the property, you know, if they, you know, agreed to give it to us, yet at the same time, they funded all of the cleanup.
Dreamland.
I mean, if that's the case, then you, you wouldn't need the funding to clean it up if they were gonna take care of it.
Are you gonna write that letter to Blanca?
No, we have no, no comment. We haven't had much luck with them, have we?
Thank you, Aerosmith addressed this in the seventies with a song called "Dream On."
Well, uh, so anyway, do it.
I guess I would, I would, uh, proceed on for, uh, making a motion for, I was to recommend that the attorney come up with a resolution, um, to remove, um, the two, two parcels...
On the like of property.
On the like of property.
Parcels on north of, north of government?
There's two on the north of government, the, the main like of property, and then public work.
And all but public works?
Yeah.
Three?
Three.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I just, in discussion, I, I just don't see the need, if you're gonna remove any, and, and not, why not remove all? I mean, I would either keep them or, or not, I don't think...
Can I rescind that, uh, that back and, and include all of them? I was thinking of just three, before I got the information that it wouldn't affect the cleanup on them.
I got a question. Is there any federally funds out there that could be used and got with a classification on that for public works property?
You mean as... Due to the urban renewal plan? I mean, I'll have, have to look into that, there is, oh, there's brownfield, um, funds usually available for public, publicly owned properties for cleanup, or at least evaluation that we would probably go forward with, um, but I've not looked into what might be available. Um, at this point, there's no negative to staying in it, because there is no proposed action, which would also have to go through you all, um, so if you wanna just kind of push pause and let me look at, to it a little bit more as far as the impact of private property, which I'm not as familiar with, before you make any changes, um, just to make sure that it's negative or positive, or no impact.
Good recommendation.
So, shall we table this until further notice?
Yeah, let me, I, I can, I'll, I'll work with the mayor and legislature, and I've got a little better information to, to make that decision on before we go one direction.
Look again, Matthew.
So, we do need to have a motion made to take the, uh, urban renewal as control with the board of Alderman.
Like that?
I make a motion that we take control of the urban renewal zone on Pine Drive with the board of Alderman.
I'll second.
And a motion and a second?
So, that would be to amend the resolution, the resolution of the urban renewal plan and have the attorney...
Yeah, have the city attorney draft a, a resolution for the urban renewal designation zone on Pine Drive.
Okay, is there a second to have?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lee. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay. We have a consideration to adopt a resolution establishing a formal resolution numbering system. Alderman Pfeiffer, um, I do wanna go back to one thing on, on the last resolution that we did pass just shortly. Uh, your first, we really should send those resolutions through the attorney for any adjustments that may need, be needed from the discussion.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
All right. Am I ready?
Yep.
All right. Uh, I think this one's pretty straightforward. We just, we've never had a, uh, proper numbering system or numbering system at all for resolutions we have for ordinances. Uh, without it, it's really hard to find any of them online. They get lost in the shuffle of an agenda packet, so this is basically setting the criteria for how we wanna track, starting our resolution numbering system, and if it, uh, is approved tonight, it would start with this one, and go back to capture any we've approved since our administration, starting July 1.
That would be what I would wanna have the full board and the, the attorney and everybody to discuss, because you don't wanna go backwards, so you'd wanna, you would wanna start July 1, you wouldn't wanna go back.
No, that's not what I, that's what I'm saying, we would start, but we have to start with the one...
You're talking about our July 1, going back to that.
If, if this motion passes to start a resolution numbering system, the first resolution that's numbered is the one we'll pass establishing the system. It has to be. Then from there, Vicky said we would have to capture the ones we passed in July. Is that, am I phrasing that correctly?
You could just start from here and move forward.
You could just start from here and get along.
Just move, start from here and go forward.
You could start from here and move forward. I don't, yeah.
Um, and, and the only other question I would have is, uh, as long as we follow the correct process and the board votes, and, uh, they are only numbered after approved, you know, we don't wanna number resolutions that we're proposing, um, only after approval.
Absolutely.
Um, so, we've got a resolution proposed, and, uh...
Well, it's gonna need to be edited.
Yeah, it needs to go before.
So, it'll be...
And we can re-present.
And as she said, even on the last one, Vicky, she said that's what her intent was, was to have that go to the attorney.
Yes.
Resolution, and then...
Motion needs to be made to the attorney.
I'll forward it to the attorney to be revised. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
All right. I make a motion to forward the resolution to establish the resolution numbering system to the city attorney to revise and re-present at our next board of Alderman meeting.
I second.
Motion and a second by Alderman Tillis. All in favor?
Aye.
We need a, we need a roll call.
Not to send it to the...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Oh, man, it took a long time to get to the consent agenda.
All right.
All right, we move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I do have, uh, something I need to pull from the consent agenda. It would be the July 1 minutes.
Item J.
Item J.
Item J. All right.
I have some.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to pull K and DD.
Do we have any more?
Yes, um, I have something, no, nevermind, Shannon's got K.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item J, K, and DD?
Some of them.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, item J, Alderman Hinton.
All right, uh, the minutes from, uh, July 1 in executive session under J reflect that there was a motion made, uh, to retain Wilkerson as the, uh, attorney to represent cases that are ongoing. That motion, uh, did not get made and did not get seconded. Um, the discussion needs to be with the board whole of what, uh, was discussed, and, uh, from what was discussed was, uh, proposed, that Wilkerson would be retained to finish out the cases that were ongoing, and we did not have a clear understanding of how many cases there were, because that'd been our first meeting, and, uh, we asked to, uh, revisit it in the first meeting of August, which would be today.
Okay. So, it, that motion to...
You're gonna say amend the...
Motion to amend.
Yeah.
Minutes to remove the motion.
Correct.
Yeah, other, other shots I need.
Okay, got a second?
I'm second.
Got a second by Alderman Tillis. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, you wanna make a motion to approve item J without that?
No. Didn't I have some?
Didn't I have something?
No, that, well, one of yours.
I make a motion to approve item J with that amendment.
Motion?
Second.
Second, Alderman Wade, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, item K, Mrs. Piper?
Can we take it? Can you take Markman?
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes, there's on the minutes, approval of special call meeting July 2. It references to a July 7 special call meeting, but there were no minutes for July 7 to approve.
Did you just correct the date?
No, we're missing a set.
We're missing a set of minutes.
The one where we hired our city clerk that night? Those aren't in the packet.
Okay.
But the July 7 don't need to be, I mean, there's nothing to disapprove from the July 2. That didn't need to be.
No, but it was referenced on the July 7 minutes.
Yeah, just because there was a reference to July 7 and wanted to make sure.
Correctly, the July 7 was referenced?
No, it was correct. It's just that there was, that was the reference that if, some people might not have even known we had a July 7 meeting.
So, I need to add July 7 minutes to the next agenda.
Agenda for.
Correct.
Okay, so we can go ahead and approve item K.
You'd say that there were five meetings.
We have a motion to approve item K?
Wait one second.
We'll get CD after we approve.
Wait, did we already approve July 1?
Yeah.
I missed a problem. I'm so sorry. Is it too late?
Yes.
You can amend it?
I need to. It's an error.
That's in item J?
Yeah, it's item J. I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, so on that one, there was an item 4005 Government Street. And in there, the motion for our vote that was recorded lists a property on Harbor Road with, I'm guessing a PID number that relates to a property on Harbor Road, and it should be referencing 4005 Government.
PID number was wrong.
And the property address.
The name and everything, what's wrong?
Okay.
And then I think the final thing was, I'm sorry.
405, what, what, what item is it?
It was item, I believe it was.
Item A on the July 1.
4005 Government property was a lot split. And when the vote was recorded in the minutes, it was referencing a property at 1208 Harbor Road. Which I think was seen on the agenda in June.
Yes, that was June 17. But this was July 1 that this was on.
Right. One more. I believe Rob Blackman's name is missing from the three that were appointed to assist engineering services. I believe it just said Wade and Hinton.
No, no, it was only two. It was two with three others. There was two.
It was myself, Alan, Daryl.
That was not.
And we voted them in.
And Matthew.
It was not, it was two and then you had three.
He's on the clerk thing.
He's on, he's on the assistant.
I wrote them down. All right, I'm gonna just switch that one. Thank you. That was it. Sorry about that.
All right, we got, we need a motion to approve item J.
We have to do it again?
Unless.
No.
We need to.
We amended it.
We amended it twice.
Sorry, we do.
Amendment approved and then.
All right, make a motion to amend the approve item J with amendments.
There you go. All right, got a motion in a second?
Who's seconding?
I'll second.
Got a second, Alderman Blackman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, K's already been approved.
K has not been approved.
K has not been approved.
Motion on it, just not seconded.
But there's nothing to be changed on it.
Is there any other change? Nothing to change? We just, we just approved?
As I know, nothing on K.
All right, we're approving item K. Somebody?
I make a motion to.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got item DD.
All right, that was a simple one. I just did not know the hourly rate that they're gonna charge for overtime times point, or time 3.0. Is that an established rate? It wasn't in the contract, just as long as we know it? I didn't see it in the paperwork.
Yeah, I'll go back and determine, I mean, it's a not exceed amount, so.
Just if we had the hourly rate, I think it'd be clearer. It just didn't jump out at me.
Yeah, I mean, I can go back and clarify that, but it wouldn't change that.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so, there's nothing to change.
Are you, are you gonna put the hourly rate?
I mean, I'll, I can provide it. Like I said, it doesn't change in terms of the contract because.
Yeah, it just wasn't specific in their letter, and I didn't want it to not be made.
Need a motion to approve item DD?
I'll.
Thank you.
Motion to approve DD.
Got a motion to approve item DD? Do we have?
Second.
We got a second, Alderman Hinton, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, department reports, okay. Does anyone have anything to pull from the docket of claim?
Make a motion to approve the docket of claims. All expenditures are appropriate and authorized by law and spread the summary on the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, city clerk accept the monthly budget report. Does anyone have any questions on the monthly budget report? And is there a motion to excel?
Motion to accept the monthly budget report.
Got a motion by Alderman Blackman, second by Alderman Wade, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. All right. All right, can we authorize the budget amendments for the city clerk? Does anyone have any questions about the budget amendments? And is there a motion to authorize the budget amendments as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Alderman Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Let's see. Board of Alderman, discuss appointments to zoning and adjustments board and parks advisory board. Is there a motion to appoint Liz, Ms. Liz Elmore to the parks advisory board to serve the remainder of Mr. Scott Elmore's term expiring July 31, 2026?
So moved.
Got a motion by Alderman Dennis, a second by Alderman Blackman, all in favor?
Aye. All right.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint, let's see what we have here, for the zoning and adjustments We have filled the unexpired term of Michael Smith. We need an appointment for the zoning and adjustments board.
I would like to nominate Will Thompson for Ward 3.
Second. Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Will Thompson, a second by Alderman Hinton, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, we're down to general public comment. Anybody from the public would like to address the board again?
Joe U. Ward 3. What I wanna say is I wanna congratulate all of y'all for the good job that y'all are doing. I think that y'all are representing the city well, that y'all are taking up the items that the voters were most adamant about, and y'all are addressing those. I particularly like the way that y'all are receptive to public comments. That wasn't always the way it worked here. I like the way that y'all are working together as a unit. I like the conversations and the transparent way in which y'all are making votes, y'all are discussing the votes, and y'all are explaining why you're gonna vote the way that you vote. That was one of the things the citizens really asked for, and I think I speak for a lot of citizens. We appreciate that y'all are doing that. And second, I wanna welcome all of our new city employees, particularly our new city clerk. I've heard wonderful things about you, and I can't wait to meet with you personally. And that includes our new police chief and fire chief, our other new employees. I would just like to say, as the city moves forward and our next budget process is being considered, that particularly for our first responders, our policemen and firemen, that we consider pay raises. I think it's very tough living in Ocean Springs now economically, and those people that help us, protect us, should be first to lift for that. And then finally, speaking of pay raises, our city employees, I've looked at those positions that are approved and people exiting positions and moving into positions. Those are very poor paid positions. I just gotta say that. I mean, it's hard to have a living wage now when you're making $12, $14 an hour. And I would like y'all to consider, at least consider, giving pay raises to our city employees. Thank y'all, y'all doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
How you doing?
Hi, how you doing? Here at Perez, thank you for having me here tonight. Be very brief, thank you all for your time. I live in Falkirk, I believe it's Ward 4, between Whitney Oaks and Falkirk. There's a drainage easement that is a responsibility of the city to be cleared. I'm having an extremely difficult time reaching out to anybody who can help me get that cleared. I've been in this building four or five times, I've been to Public Works itself no less than five times. Sarah Harris, I've reached out to her, she's helping me coordinate through the city attorney. I'm just looking for some help on trying to get that easement between Whitney Oaks and the promenade cleared. That way, we don't suffer any flooding damages if there's another storm and that the, doesn't damage any of our property. The city's responsible for clearing it. Apparently, there's an access issue that is, needs to get worked out between the city attorney and the people who are responsible for getting us in there to get it cleared out, but seeing how it's a responsibility. I'm politely asking you for you to take care of it and get it cleared out between Whitney Oaks and promenade.
I can promise you they're on it. They've been discussing this and working on it, I promise you. It's getting handled. I know it's not soon enough, but we're trying to get that right of entry and get in there and get it done.
I appreciate it, Mr. Cox. My neighbors have been working on it longer than I have, for like seven, eight months, and that's why I showed up here tonight. Thank you very much for your support.
May I speak a little bit on this?
You're welcome.
I met with a few of your neighbors, and I wasn't aware of the needing access issue. But I did speak to Alan about the drainage under the entrance to promenade, which was also blocked. So, I don't know if that's related, but we are looking at.
I mean, one goes with the other, you know?
Yeah.
Like if you, if you, if you clear out the area between the two subdivisions there, it's not gonna help if the, you know, access to the water is prohibited underneath the road itself.
Correct.
So, they'll probably have to have some type of jetting operation to go in there, clean that out so that it can flow appropriately.
Well, they have access to it, so that won't be an issue. They will get that in. But the other, they are working on the right of entry to handle that, so hopefully soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Al, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Here, Cynthia Sutton with the Ocean Springs Chamber of Main Street. I just wanna invite everybody out tomorrow morning to breakfast with first responders. It's open to the public, it's from 8 to 9 a.m., 8 to 9 a.m. at Broom's Grocery. You'll get to hear from our police chief and our fire chief, so we invite everybody to come out and complimentary breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing?
Can you hear me okay?
Hello? You're speaking.
We're gonna get really close on that one, man.
I didn't wanna blow everybody out here, so. Yeah, my name is Brian Rogers. My wife, Leah, we are longtime residents. We both have small businesses here. We used to live in Fort Byu, which was Ward 1. Recently, we moved to Ward 6. And Julie, I just wanna say thank you for reaching out to us. You responded really quickly to our request, and we just think that's awesome, so thank you. We know it's late and there's not gonna be anything that can be done about this tonight. But in our neighborhood, my street is 5804 South Ward Drive. And on Ocean Springs Road, we moved into a new home. It's an Elliott home. There's the church there, not a real creative name, but the church called The Church, right there. And there's massive flooding, but we could not see it when we, when we purchased the house. We had to make the purchase without being able to see all the flooding. And you kinda need, that was our, I mean, after it rains for just like four hours, you can hardly get out of the neighborhood.
For the.
Yeah. So, the struggle is, and we're just two of the neighbors in the neighborhood, but part of the struggle is, we're not sure who's responsible, so if we talk to the county, the county says it's the city. If we talk to the city, the city says it's the county. But it's almost like there's not a plan to deal with it, so, so I just wanted to bring it up so that we hopefully can get it on a future agenda. And we'll put all our data together at that time.
That's the, the new road with the new homes that, right there, off Ocean Springs Road.
It's right behind the church. They built about 10 to 14 Elliott homes.
You know right where that is, Alan? And we opened a lot of ditches up out there, I'm sure there.
We have been working out there, we've dug ditches on both sides, but we're gonna have to do something on Ocean Springs Road to make the order go to that big box cover.
There you go.
Yeah. And, and we know people are aware of it, we just wanted to, it's a really bad situation, so we wanna make sure it gets attention. And we're gonna put together all our, all our data and what we would like to see done, and just see what you guys can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thanks. Okay.
My name's Megan Swanson, and it's regarding the same issues. So, we just, we're neighbors, we kinda wanted to do power numbers here. We have our photos, we've been in contact with the previous boards to let them know about the ongoing issues. But we have standing water, again, we have kids, it is a breeding ground for mosquitoes, for snakes, I mean, it's flooded just during basic rainstorm. I mean, we haven't had any major storms, thankfully, within the last few months, but it's a concern. I mean, we moved in in April, and we had to get flood insurance even though it's not a flood zone. We got it, and within the first 10 days of us moving in, we were worried our home was gonna flood. So, it was very nerve wracking, we're not from the coast, so my husband was very anxious prone when this started happening, so it would be very helpful. It is taken seriously because we, again, like living in this community, we moved from Fort Byu Estates, and it really is an issue. Lighting is an issue, too. It's not well lit, that's a safety issue. Just even from Ocean Springs Road turning on, you can't see it, there's a huge ditch on the side of the road. I mean, with the flooding you're coming in, you can't see where you're going. So, just all things kinda being taken into consideration.
You're welcome to leave the pictures there with.
I was gonna.
And they can pass them around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sam?
Good evening again. Sam Washington, Chairman of Board of Trustees. First of all, I wanted to say congratulations to the administration, and I also want to let you know, I know the last three years I've been coming here as Chairman of Board of Trustees, a lot of times with urban renewal with this property, but I also wanted to say thank you for everything you do from Macedonia. Alan, I have him on speed dial, and he always helped me anytime I bring the things to him. I also wanted to make the offer to the mayor, to the administration, the last time you did something to do that was good and taking care of some folks that was in need. When Mount Point experienced the tornado, all the churches in Ocean Springs and the city, we got together, we went over there and fed folks in our sister cities. I think as a city that I love, like that, I'm originally from New York, everybody who knows Macedonia, you know we love to cook. We did stand up for responders, Pete Anderson, so forth. We just stand up for responders, Peter Anderson, so forth, what I would like to put forth to the administration, and it doesn't have to be right away, but I think we probably should look forward to trying to get all the churches together, the city together, and I can see for myself, I've been truly blessed my whole life, but to make sure we don't see those people are less fortunate. I think as a city, we have a great city, but to always think about people who are not as fortunate as us, so you will kinda take that under consideration, and knowing that myself or Greg Gibson, we're somebody, if you get in touch with Greg, he gets in touch with me, but again, just thank you guys for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, today's going to be Ward Five, very briefly, I too want to thank you for the tremendous job that you're dealing. It's not an easy task that you have before you. You can satisfy some people some amount of time, not all the people all the time. Always seek God in anything that you do, He will guide you in the direction that you deserve. I'm gonna put that out there, I own that, 'cause that's exactly what I do. My favorite pet peeve, Amro Davis here in Byu, report on the freeze, have we received that information from the state or from the county through, from the state? Okay. And on Hopekum Boulevard and Government Street, when you get ready to go and turn north, that turning lane needs, that needs to be moved back, because if you don't, you're gonna hit that...
Sure. You're talking about heading west on Government Street?
On the town road.
No, it's on eleven feet, right in turn to go north. It's already in the works, we've already turned it in, I'm gonna at, at least do a rollover curve there, because it gets hit every...
Yeah, because, hey, I'm always have to get a new tire for my ride, tire for my truck.
Me too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ryan Ripper's Ward Two, need a little help on Porter with speeders. The issue is Jackson, past Martin, and then straightaway past Lazy Oak, my wife and I drive, I walk that every day, literally. Yeah. They got women pushing strollers, they got them jogging, they got kids, something needs to be done. There's a big yellow Victorian house with a comp right there, make some revenue, but really, let's see.
So you're talking about the women jogging with the strollers going too fast?
And the second thing, four years I've been up here, I need my road paved, Azalea, I need a mill, I need a paint, I'm not a patient person in four years, Karen, I know you're good. And whoever gets it done, I'm gonna erect a statue.
Believe me, we have tried, we're waiting for two years in, can't get anything paved.
And I get bounced to the city, and I get that.
We know the feeling on that, we're trying to get them in right up on...
More importantly, we need to stop the speeding. Right above the...
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, does anybody else like to address the board?
Mr. Mayor, I need to apologize, I didn't want to add a bar. School Street, they replaced the water lines while we're down School Street. When are they gonna repay that?
Ms. Sarah, you wanna address that? I know we had, we had this discussion today.
I'm trying to get them to pavement, please don't kill me when I say this, when they come to Government Street, so I'm trying, hopefully the next week or so.
We, we had a little hiccup this morning, they were supposed to start on Government Street, and the milling machine broke on the interstate last night while they were working, and so that, that really started up today, so hopefully we'll get them here beginning of next week. Is that everybody? Okay, we move on to Mayor and Alderman's forum. Mr. Tillis?
So, with a couple that came in regarding this flooding issue, I mean, how does this happen? The developers, they come in, they put their properties up, and they said, they said there's no lighting, I mean, this is what I'm concerned about, it's all this new development.
That project was originally started with the cannery, not with the city.
It didn't go through our process.
It didn't go through the city's process.
And it's not a subdivision, it's already plotted lots, in other words, each lot already had a parcel, so it wasn't left, it's a little subdivision.
Right, yeah, it's sad to see this.
The city inherited it.
Right. Well, I hope that, you know, in the future, I know we got a lot of subdivisions, and I'm not saying we're not doing it, but I just don't want us to inherit the problems. I don't want us to inherit the problems that I see here, so I know we're doing a lot of things out in Savannah Estates, I drove through the other day, I seen a lot of flooding, water just standing on the streets, so I've said enough tonight, thank y'all for listening.
Thanks, Dave. Sarah?
I'm just got a couple of things asking the, the city residents and, and businesses downtown to just be as patient as they can with this. I thought that the milling would have been down the road a little bit today, but with this delay, hopefully next week, next Tuesday? That is what he told us, so... Okay, so be patient, it's, it's a messy job, and it, it's not fun to be around all of that stuff, but I think from what I've talked to, what, a week, week or two at the most, as far as paving and milling? It's like two days of milling and two days of paving, and then maybe a day for it to tighten the side streets. Yeah, and then let it sit for a while and then striping. Ten to fourteen days and we can stripe it. They'll have, they'll have temporary center line flags, so, but just be cautious when parking. We're gonna be striped. I will also say thanks to Public Works for the nice repair job at Jackson and Porter, looking good there, and that's about all I have to say.
Mr. Wade?
I've got two things that I just thought of, the cleaning of the sidewalks for you to get with Delta, and Alan, the little apron that they poured last year at the school, at the upper, when they poured that new section by that old concrete, they busted it all up, and now, school's only been in a week, and it's starting to come up, so we may have to replace that section of sidewalk coming into the parking lot, off of Hopekum, because it's, it's just turning nothing but rocks.
We might need to bring them back to look at that.
Yeah.
They need to replace it if it's...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's bad.
Flifer?
All right, um, let's see, I had the Ocean Springs Witches Ride Organization reach out, and they are interested in donating witches hat decorations for Cash Alley, which is during Halloween, not to interfere with crews in the coast, so I don't know how we proceed with that, who do they contact?
They can contact my office, and that will...
Your office and Cynthia's, so...
And I will address.
Okay, that was one thing. Next, I've got code reports. Could you give me a little bit of an update on 104 Burton Darrell, on there were charges filed, or seventh of this year? Is there anything since then? What is the next step?
They won't be served.
They have to be served, and that's...
They have to be served and given a court date.
Okay, and then what do you have for 228 Hunter, any new updates there?
I did break the sheet, was it having there?
That one is mostly overgrown grass, it just says pending resolution, that was dated back in June.
Yeah, he probably hasn't updated it yet, he's out, so...
Thank you. Next, I've got, I've heard from a lot of residents about live streaming meetings, I know we didn't livestream one of our special calls last week, and that's when I heard from a lot of residents, so I was wanting the board to consider if we would, I don't know, set a policy to livestream anything except executive, I don't know how that would work, or just make sure we livestream special calls in our boards and commissions?
We didn't livestream, mainly we do interviews and we don't livestream the individual interviews online, so as far as special calls, I mean, we...
If it's, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if it's not something, we can't.
Yes, that's, that's up to y'all, I mean, it is, you gotta bring an extra staff to do that, and usually some special calls are for one item, and it's just...
Yeah, I just, I think about, you know, people's lives, work, mobility issues, we have the technology, I just don't know what all we're doing, turning it on and off, but just asking, we consider a little more?
Special calls don't involve personnel, I think that it could be livestreamed, but personnel can be...
Right. That's all, just asking, we kinda consider that? And then, I think I talked to, I mentioned it to Bobby about can we start uploading our meeting agendas for any board, commissions, board of aldermen to our city social media, if that was possible, 'cause I've had people ask for that.
I think they're already working on, on it, definitely.
Lastly, I just wanted to thank our whole board, I like seeing people take ownership of some items and be the ones to introduce them and kinda get behind the things that mean lots to them or their ward, so just a thanks to everyone, and that's all.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Permit Clerk Karen Savoy. Last of unemployment will be August 22nd, 2025, and start the process to fill the seat vacant position.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
All right. All right.
Okay, Ms. Messenger?
I'd like to thank Chief Dye and his guidance with dealing with the alligator in the Lakeview Pond, I think he still resides there unfortunately, but I do appreciate your help in that matter, and in talking with me regarding the speed on Ocean Springs Road as well. I'd like to thank Alan and his crew for all the work they put in, especially today with the broken water main in Park Town, and the beautification and road work in Lakeview. I appreciate you and your, your crew quite a bit.
Mr. Hinton?
All right, I'd like to start off, have a discussion that I'd like to talk about, establishing a procedure and presentation for doing the resolution for the board, after kinda looking at it, and Shannon kinda spiked, sparked a, thinking that if we go with a procedure and everything, kinda outlining authorization, resolution of draft, just kinda go and review and discussion, I would like to bring this before the city attorney, clerk, and also make everybody on the board aware of it, print that off and get that to y'all after the meeting, so is that something y'all would like to entertain?
Yes.
Yes.
Over the process and procedure.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for the discussion of establishing procedures and presentation of resolutions for the board.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Ballin and Wade, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
And the next thing that I have, wrapping it up, is I would like to discuss about forming a couple of committees that would be overseeing the UDC reviews, along with doing a ordinance committee also, and I've printed out a couple of suggestions, and I have a couple of copies to leave with you all, this is something that I would like everybody to kinda look at, it would be a seven member commission of each, where we would appoint a person of our choosing on the committee, so for instance, myself, I would be able to appoint somebody, each other, Alderman would be able to appoint somebody from their ward. Do I have any comments?
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, good idea.
And then, and then the committee will, will move their findings to...
Yeah, and that's where I was gonna follow up, is after the committees find their discrepancies, if there's any, and put them into the planning commission, planning department, and to the departments where they need to go, ordinances.
You're gonna have counsel review and you get this set up?
Yes.
To have in the next meeting? Or is that intent?
What is the board's wishes on it? I mean, would the board like to review what's being proposed? If we go ahead and give it to... All right, and this one is for clerk. Y'all wanna kinda cruise that over real quick?
I said who proofed it? Ordinance?
I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see things like this ahead of time, man, real live.
Now, this, this is strictly just for discussion, this is nothing to make a motion on tonight, but if, this would be something to talk about and get with the city clerk and attorney and, so, strictly, this is just a talking point.
You're wanting to establish the two committees and their guidelines and what the intent of them are?
Correct.
And then have the attorneys bring that back to us?
Yes.
And everybody's got your ideas here to review?
Yeah.
So you wanna make a motion for that to be brought back for the next meeting, or what?
I'd like to hear what the board has to say, any opinion?
I guess, you know, just give us more time on it, but I think it's a great idea, man.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we present this to the city clerk and the attorney for review and to bring it back up at our next recess meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, Ballin and Flifer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who do you propose like the, like for instance, planning's over planning commission and ZAM, and then...
Means all we're doing is making a committee to rise another committee.
Right, but if they're meeting and it's open to public meetings, somebody has to be there from the city to take minutes to do, I mean, there has to be some...
And that's what...
Which ones are, what are we, what is the...
Short term committee is not something that's civilized.
This is, this is a question, is basically, you know, do we do it a sixty day, ninety day, a hundred twenty, a hundred and eighty day? This wouldn't be a committee, that would be an ongoing committee, this is strictly to clean up the UDC and the ordinances within themselves, so...
Okay, but somebody still has to publish the minutes, set the public...
Yeah, this would be a, a public...
Set the agenda, set the...
Yeah.
Right, so what city department is going to be, the UDC's gonna be planning?
Yeah.
And ordinance is gonna be planning?
And planning and building.
Anything else? We had a pretty productive meeting. Hold it, we're not paying.
The mystery of the beeping noise, it was Taco Night at the yacht club, and my end was a phone.
All right, we have, is there a motion to go into closed session to determine the necessity of going into it? Second, Ballin and Dennis. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Don't forget their sandwiches.
Man, there's a whole big old box in there.
Just, just something. Yeah.
Then we, then we impaired the problem.